Okay.
There we go.
We're gonna, we're gonna dock your pay.
Hey Reed Burley, good to meet you.
I'm Reed.
I'm Steve.
Good to be Steve.
Another Steve Reed.
Hey Reed Burley.
Thanks, Colin.
Good to meet you.
Okay. While we, while we do the welcome, we'll let Reed get situated here. So, thank you everybody again for, for coming. Let's start this meeting. I want to thank everyone from the public, from the staff, from preparing the packets, and the volunteers here up on the board that are going to listen to this for spending their Thursday evenings with us. And hopefully we will have a, a nice interaction between everybody and come to closure on, on these, what's it, four cases here. So, with that, do we have to take roll and all that kind of good stuff? Nope. All right. With that, let's get started with the first case, Mr. Cox.
Public comments.
I'm sorry? Oh, public comments. Okay. Public comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter. The board is not permitted to discuss or take action on any presentations made to the board. Presentations are limited to matters over which the board has authority. Speakers have up to four minutes for the time limit determined by the presiding officer. Each speaker must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics to be presented. You may also email at asantos@trophyclub.com. But that's for things not associated here. If they wanted to address a specific case, they will do that at the time of the case, correct? Okay. So, we have a couple people here that have made comments. And when we get to that case, you can make your comments or put in sheets then. So, with that, let's, let's get the ball rolling. Case number one, case ZBA 23-001, the Aspen Estates at Trophy Club. Do I have to read that whole thing? Oh, boy. Now I get it. Yeah, you're right. I do need to double my pay. Okay. We're going to conduct a public hearing regarding a request made by Dries Custom Homes on behalf of landowner Beck Properties Trophy Club LP for variance to zoning regulations to allow for a third and/or fourth car garages to face the street for lots 1-7, Block A of the Aspen Estates at Trophy Club, approximately 3.37 acres out of the J. Henry survey, abstract number 529, and R. Allen survey, abstract number 17, Town of Trophy Club, Denton County, Texas, M. Cox. And B, take appropriate action regarding a request made by Dries Custom Homes on behalf of the landowner Beck Properties Trophy Club LP for variance to zoning regulations to allow for a third and/or fourth car garage facing the street for lots 1-7, Block A of the Aspen Estates at Trophy Club, approximately 3.37 acres out of the J. Henry survey, abstract number 529, and R. Allen survey, abstract number 17, Town of Trophy Club, Denton, Texas, M. Cox.
Okay. Good job.
Oh, boy.
All right. Good evening, Chairman and Board members. If y'all would humor me on something, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna do a quick history lesson. We've kind of learned this over the last six to eight months, working with all these different sites. And I know I've gotten quite a few calls on different things on, well, how did this become? Or how did this become? So, I'll get to it, but this will tie into all three of these cases. So, what you see in front of you is zoning from years ago. The dark orange is R-15, and then the lighter color is R-12. And you just kind of hold what you got there on that. You'll see, when PD 27 came in, they cut it up into what they called neighborhoods. So, you had nine neighborhoods in PD 27. And then each of those neighborhoods had up to five different style lots in there. Very, very unique, complex, but also interesting, PD 27. Going back real quick, one of the questions came, and I got a, we, staff, we received a ton of calls when we sent out notices. One of the questions was why R-12? And then why, a couple of these are R-12, and then why is one of them R-15? If you look, and I'll just flip it back and forth, but if you look, and I'll put my mouse here. So, what we're, the agenda item right now, number one, it's, this is 8H, that's Aspen. If you see when I do that, it falls into that R-12. So, when they rezoned it, they cut all those squares out for that. And so, up where 7 is, that's one of, that's the, why it's R-15. So, that kind of answers some of those questions. And then the other question was, is you got, and y'all will see in some of the depictions and the pictures and things that we've got, is you've got one house, one lot, and then you've got another one sitting right next to it, and there's, they're different. The way that they divided these up, so for example, when we're talking about Aspen right now, neighborhood two, neighborhood two had the options of lots one, and lots two, and lots three, and lots four. So, all those are intermixed in, in that. Just another quick example, so lot one would be a 12,000 square foot minimum lot. Lot two would be 10,000. Then they dropped down to 8,400, 7,200. And the smallest was 5250 square foot. So, just a little kind of brief history on that. Y'all have any questions on that? Okay. If you recall, just a little over a year ago, we brought Cypress to y'all. And that was located in the 8 neighborhood. And so, that particular neighborhood, I think I had it written down, all of those lots, it was like 122 something lots, all of those were 5,250 square foot lots. And in the PD, it's, it was specific. It said, "All garages, or the garages can face the street." And they had some setbacks and some things like that, but that's what, if y'all recall, you know, over a year ago. Okay, moving on. I will be, try to be brief, but this is also going to be redundant. What you hear me say now, I must say the same thing two more times. The only difference will be R-12 and R-15 on that third one. Background explanation, they are requesting to allow for third and fourth car garages to face the street. We had questions on that. I, I had a couple questions on, are there even four car garage? Is there a fourth car? We have a few that you can see from the street, but we have a lot that you don't know, because you can have a two car garage that has a double bay. So, you can actually have, it can look like a two car garage, but fit three cars in there. So, the verbiage was important for the builder to make sure they included that fourth garage. Because as plan reviewers, when it comes through our desk, we're not looking at doors. We're looking at the number of garages, so, and garage spaces. So, you could actually have a two car garage door, but the one we're doing plan review, that's a three car garage. So, therefore, that fourth one could be that one facing the street, the little small garages. They are similar to the houses surrounding the property of PD 27. The hardship stated is the zoning requirement for home and driveway access for the R-12 district does not match with the surrounding homes. These renditions that you see here are existing Trophy Club homes. And so, it gives you an example of what, when they are stating that third car, I believe. The one on the top left is one of our few. That would be the, the third and fourth car garage. And then the rest of them would be those third car garages. The rest of them are J-Swing, or all of those are J-Swing first and second garages. Each of these sites, they're very unique. If you also recall, we've got capped gas wellheads on each one of these. Texas Railroad Commission does not allow anything to be built on that. So, on the very front end, and this goes back almost two years, developer had to figure out how to get a street in there and design lots on these different gas well sites. And every one of them are in a little bit different locations. We've got some gas well sites that had three. We had some that had one, some that had none. So, without those gas wellheads that are capped, and I'm sure Dries could speak to this, they would probably have a lot different layouts in these sites. They do have a presentation. I hope I'm not stealing too much of their thunder, but I'm gonna go through that. So, at Aspen Estates, we've got it broken down to, there are 77 homes surrounding these that actually have that third car garage, could be fourth, but third car facing the street. And then there's a handful, 17, that do not, which was allowed in the PD to not have them as well. So, in summary, the, we have to have a concurring vote. We have to have four votes for, which is necessary for approval. Our public hearing, it was published in the Star Telegram. We did send notices out 200 feet around of each of these properties. We had one email that was objecting. I believe I forwarded it to each of y'all. I did reply back, and I haven't gotten a response yet. I don't know if that's gonna change, you know, her mind or not. But I did explain, you know, a little more detail. And then, like I said, we, we received at least, I'd say 10 to 12 phone calls at, when we sent the notices out. Most everyone was just asking, what, what, what does this mean to us? And ironically, most of the people that we talked to, they said, oh, well, that's exactly the house that we live in that's got that with, and they had no objection. I'm here for any questions. Can go into more detail, and then also, Dries, the applicant, they are here as well.
I have a question.
Yes.
What was the objection in the email you got?
That the zoning for, I, I believe I have it up there. If you, I can, I'd be happy to read it as well. You want me to read it?
Sure.
All right. Okay. Dear zoning board of adjustments, in my opinion, the Town of Trophy Club zoning placed restrictions on certain lot sizes, so garages would not face the street. I live in an R-15 neighborhood with that restriction and strongly support not having garages face the street. It presents a calmer, cleaner, luxury-oriented neighborhood. I ask that the ZBA support the existing zoning restrictions. Since the homes do not exist there, there is no hardship case. If the town has erred in the past and allowed street-facing garages in R-12 zoned areas, there is no reason to per- What's that? Sorry. Perpetuate the same error. And R-12 zoning has been in place for decades and is, and it's developers' job to know the requirements for building on R-12 lots. It seems basic to me. I strongly support keeping R-12 zoning requirements of no street-facing garages and asks the ZBA members to vote to keep all tenants of the R-12 zoning in place. Otherwise, what is the point of having zoning requirements? Thank you for consideration. And then the, it's Pat, it's Patricia Kiefer.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cox, when you gave those numbers, you're talking about the three cases combined, not this first case in total. When you said that 12 people had contacted you, that was-
Yes, over, yes, because we sent, we had to send notices out to each individual of these, yes.
I just want to clarify that we weren't going to be having the different 12 for the second case or whatever. Okay. Do we have any other questions for?
If they're, if they weren't granted the variance, what would be the burden on the city?
On the city?
Yeah. For, if, like, if somebody wanted to build a house with, it's my understanding there's not, like, an actual house that's, that's requesting this yet? That builder just wants the option to do it? Is that correct?
So, what triggered this to begin with is Aspen Estates is actually ready to start building homes on it. And the application was dropped off for the model home. So, usually your model homes, it's the first home built, and it's the last home to be sold. And they will typically take where the garage would normally be, make that fancy offices, whatever it may be. And so, when we saw that, that's what triggered, is that, is this going to eventually be that third garage, you know, that's facing the street? That's when we reached out to them, got together, and then they came in and dropped off the applications.
Oh, okay.
Because they have a, there's, there's quite a few that, because of the lot configuration. So.
So, to answer your, the question is, the developer would have to come up with a different model?
Right.
And the city would not be?
Yeah. Or, and we'd have to consider them individually, I guess, right?
Yes, they would come in individually.
Since we don't have an actual, like, home, like, we're looking at the whole thing?
That's right.
Yeah. Okay. And to be clear, we're still gonna hear from the Dries representatives, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Matt stole most of my thunder, so.
Sorry.
Sure. Okay. My name is Kyle Kick, Dries Custom Homes. We are the potential builder here for these sites. First of all, I just wanted to say thank y'all for your time tonight, looking at these requests. Again, as Matt has said, we have three different requests, virtually all asking for the same thing, to be able to have that third and fourth car garage facing the street. And yeah, we'll, we'll jump in. First one we talked about, we were gonna talk about is 8H. So, 8H here, as Matt mentioned, when you have these old gas well sites, those wellheads have to be capped and located either under the street or in an open space. Best case scenario to make residential lots is to put them underneath the street. When you do this, you get a lot of uniquely shaped lots. The streets don't go directly down the center of the pod. You get some lots that are shallow, or narrow, or both. In our case, most of them came out shallow, which, to add a third car garage to the front of those houses, in several cases, we don't have the depth on the pad to do so in the first place. But if you did, you're, you know, you're pushing that house farther back. Another hardship that we have is the ability to build and sell homes that blend in with the homes around us, that also uphold the current value of homes that are in Trophy Club. At the price point that our homes are projected to sell at, third car garage is largely expected to be at least an option to put on the home. The next hardship on the list here is, pertains to lot value as well as privacy. So, for one, as we mentioned, if you're adding a third car garage to the front of the house, you're pushing it back that extra 10 feet. That's 10 feet of space a homeowner is losing from their backyard, whether it's for pool space, entertainment space, whatever it is that they plan to use that for. But it's also a hardship for our neighbors around us. These are homeowners that are back to the well sites, and they've had open space behind them, no neighbors. Being that it's residential, there will be homes there. But being able to keep that home to the front, rather than push back an extra 10, maybe 20 feet, just gives our homeowner more privacy as well as those around us. So, we feel it's really a hardship for the both of, both of us. As Matt talked about in these pictures here, these are just homes that surround the sites that represent what is currently around us. The big thing to remember here is that we're not trying to be outside the box. We're not trying to do something that's uncommon or abnormal. We're really just trying to blend in with the homes that surround us, keep the same value that's here in Trophy Club, and maintain privacy as much as we can for everybody around us. This here, as Matt kind of mentioned, this is our site plan. And we color-coded this deal. And in green, you see homes that have a garage facing the street. Most of them have that garage. It's not as well as the ones that do. In blue, you have homes that do not have a garage facing the street. And then in the orangish-red color are homes that have a two car garage that face the street, meaning no garages not facing the street. As we take a zoomed-in look, where Matt stole my thunder, we've got 8H here. 77 of the 94 homes do have a garage facing the street. That's 82%, where 17 homes, 18% do not. And as my understanding, they had the ability to do so, but chose not to. And then these are just some examples of some Dries homes that if we get the approval, we would have the potential of being able to build on these sites. And yeah, that is it for 4H. If you have any other questions or comments?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
The, the garages you're showing, are those two car garages or are those a single bay type garages?
Yes, sir. Yeah. The ones that are not facing the street, those are two cars. And the ones that are on the backside are one.
Like for a golf cart or something like that?
Yes, sir.
And where would the fourth one be?
It was kind of more of what Matt mentioned. It would be if it's a tandem garage, where you have a double depth inside that same garage. Or in some cases, as there was the one house we had on there where it is placed on the side. Most of our lots, they're not wide enough to be able to do that anyways. But we kind of, we wanted to add that in there just in case it comes, so we don't have to come back and, and ask again. It's just going along with it.
What, what percentage of homes do you think would have that fourth option? I mean, just ballpark it.
10%.
Sorry, this is Mike Joby, he's our, our division president.
And it'd be that tandem garage, more than likely, just because of the widths of these lots, right? You wouldn't have the four option.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'd say 10%, I'd say max.
10% of the 77%, so you're saying seven?
Well, this particular 8H, we're only talking about, we have seven or eight lots.
There's the seven.
Seven.
Oh.
So, maybe one home.
One, yes, sir.
And, and 8H, I don't think we have a lot that's wide enough to do so.
I don't believe so. But like Matt was mentioning, that fourth car is probably mainly for that tandem, so that it doesn't get caught up at plan review.
Could we go back to that previous slide that showed the houses? I guess it's the ones that actually-
The current houses?
Yeah. Are those all zoned R-12 as well?
These are the ones that got put in the PD 27. So, they were initially R-12, but when the PD came out, they were put in there. And that, these were gas well sites at the time, so they were not put into the PD as anything other than what they already are.
And as Matt mentioned, that upper-left house is really the only one that shows the two car on the side.
Yeah. I think that's rare.
A little bit of variation, a little offset to it.
You know, I, I guess I have a question on, is, how, how far back are these third car garages? Are they set, because a couple of the neighborhoods have that third car garages, you know, almost a full car length back behind the house? You know, so it's really set back, for lack of a better word.
Sure.
You know, I look at these, and they, these are kind of flush. I like the setback. Kind of hides the golf cart sort of thing, or the storage area. Whereas if it's pulled forward, I'm not excited about, but, you know, how far back?
If you look at the upper-left-hand picture, you're gonna have a 25-foot build line on these sites. And then that front garage with the three windows there, that's gonna be set at, as at least the 25 or further back. And you have a two car garage there, so that's a 16-foot wide door. And to start adding that up, you're gonna be in the 35 to 40 feet back from the street, or from the front edge of the property line. Which from the street is gonna get added by another six or seven feet.
Go ahead, man. Chairman, the, the most popular or that we see across town is at, at minimum 30 feet from the front build line. So, we've seen that we've got 30, 35, 40, and we've got one section that's at 45, which these are sitting probably really close to that 45 from property line, not build line from property line.
Another, another part of it is the width of the lots. And so, on, with the gas wellheads being where they are, and the street being where they are, a lot of these lots are not wide enough to be able to take, like, our original house and add that carriage on the side. They're, the lots just are not wide enough for us to do that.
Of the, of these lots that we're talking about, how many of them have homes that their backyard would abut up against?
I don't know if it's gonna show in here, let me see if I can check back.
Pretty close, so, I'll tell you real quick.
8H is the, or Kyle, there's one.
This is lot one. Lot two is here. Lot three is here. Four, five, six, and then number seven is the one here.
Okay.
So.
Six of the seven, sorry, I wasn't talking about-
No, it's okay. I ask, I'm not trying to lobby you a softball, but I think something interesting that was said earlier was that, and correct me if I'm wrong, if not granted this variance, there's a chance that the homes would have to be set further back, making the backyard smaller, and obviously making any, you know, noise or whatever it be over the fence line more noticeable. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
You're correct.
Can I add something?
Go for it, yeah.
I'm with the developer. Because of the drainage, if you actually go on site, you will also notice that all the pads are about three foot elevated. So, that privacy issue is something that when we designed, we, we really tried to focus on. We actually met with the neighbors. Some of them decided to keep the wall, but I really think that, I mean, if you're about three feet higher than everybody else, and you start pushing the hu, the house back into the backyard, then there's really a privacy issue. And then I know a lot of neighbors were concerned about that. I know on 4H, that's why also we got the approval to push the garage, because people, the neighbors, came and said, "We really want to try to keep our privacy." So, if you can push the house as close as possible to the street, then that, we, we know even if you go with a two-story house, the, the angle is not gonna, you know, provide any visibility into the neighbor's backyard. So, just wanted to bring that up.
Is, is Dries specifying those types of floor plans when you look at what you're gonna offer for that?
We are gonna have two-story elevation plans. Yes, sir.
And, and they're all gonna be two stories, you're not gonna have a large one-story that pushes back?
We have a couple, but when you get into the one stories, obviously they take up a larger footprint, and so we don't have the depth for that. So, we'd have to go wider, which in turn brings more of these kind of intricate details that we'd have to do as far as the garage layout would be concerned. I would like to add that these homes, I would say of the seven in here, my base price on my lowest home that I can build in there is probably gonna be 9, 925, starting price. So, well, north of a million on all of these homes. So, and I feel confident that we can get it. Obviously, a lot of values have come up in Trophy Club. I mean, values have come up in all, all homes. But I think with that, I just want to state that, you know, we're building very nice homes on these lots.
When you compare the square footage of these homes compared to their neighbors, that they're gonna be abutting, are they comparable? Or are they, you know, what's the comparison in square footage between the existing homes and the ones that you're proposing?
I'd say very comparable, as long as the lot size. Somebody's back into it, I think those are 60-foot wide lots. We're right here at the top of number two. I think these are 60 feet wide. So, I'm guessing those homes are, I'm throwing out number 3200 square feet, if I had to guess. And that's, we're gonna be in the 3200 to 4,000 range.
That's definitely the big thing. We want to blend in.
Right.
You know, we want to build what's here. We don't want to bring in something that the town's not- You know, we wanna build what's here. We don't wanna bring in something that the town's not used to.
And by your survey here, eighty-two percent are of the garage type that you are requesting.
Yes, sir.
So going away from that would actually be the oddball house?
Yeah, we'd be more in the, yeah, not in the majority.
If push came to shove, on that double doored structure, could you go with one single in the middle and then have extra wide storage space on the sides or something to that effect? If, if, if this board got, you know, bent on the double doors, is there a way that we could address that?
I would be open to it. Uh, one thing that I would probably recommend is say no wider than eight feet on an individual door, because we can do door, a single door at ten feet wide, twelve feet wide. And you can kinda start stretching the rules a little bit. And to not do that, we could say the, the widest a door facing the street could be is eight feet. And that would be a standard single-car entry door. And then, yes, sir, you can make it a little wider on the sides to give your shop access tools, all that, golf carts.
Just thinking.
Right.
Yeah, in that, in that regard, you can have a, uh, we have a, what I'd call a two-car garage, but it's really a three-car garage because I've got a golf cart and a shop in there as well. And, and two cars plus all of our Christmas stuff, so.
Right.
So that's what everybody gets, so. So not having a fourth garage, you would have a space for, you know, kind of garage space, if you will, but not a door.
Correct.
And it's the door that, that I don't like, the front-facing door. And when I go from, from, I don't like two doors in the front and, and I don't like three doors when, when it goes over the top with four doors. For me, anyway. But, um, if they're set back and the aesthetics and a well-built house, and the drainage is an issue too. I think I, I listened to a P and Z meeting about that, where there was a, a lot of objection to these houses going in because they're elevated because of drainage. And drainage is a big, big problem here.
Huge.
Tell me.
Absolutely, for sure.
I, I spent the price of a house to get my drainage right, so. So, uh, yeah, and I, I, I have feelings for the, for the neighbors around here with an elevated house, with the house pushed back close to that gate or close to that wall.
And those walls are six feet high and as Joshua said, you know, some of our pads are three foot elevated, so it'd almost be like we'd have a fence at this height and I could be on my back patio talking to you on your back patio.
Yeah.
So.
If I can add something, there's an actual retaining wall that we build around here and along the, almost the entire back as well as here. And the reason being is when we worked with the city, uh, there was question of, we wanna make sure that all the lots drains towards the street. So that's why we build up, we raise the back of those lots and make sure the water would slope towards, so we don't you, have those problems of drainage. Uh, and that's the reason the houses are higher, to make sure that it's up and then everything flows towards the street, not to the neighbors.
Anybody else? Are there any comments from the public on this one? No one's signed up for it, but opening it up for people to. Yeah. Seeing none? Close the public. Thanks, Mr. Cox. All right, um, discussions? Among anybody here?
Well, um, I'm kinda disappointed that we don't have an actual house to look at or these houses to look at. So we can see what they look like. We see some rendering, some, some pretty houses and they're set back quite a ways from the street, so we can't really get the, the full impact of what-
Our model floor plan that we submitted on my iPad that I didn't show y'all.
Okay.
Go ahead and continue your discussion. Let me see what I can pull up real quick.
Beyond the floor pan, you have any comments, Steve?
Um, I, well, I drove by the area today and, um, I, honestly, I couldn't find a house that didn't have a front-facing garage, so I was surprised when your map showed some. I guess the, um, the only questions that I had, were you aware of the limitation before you took all this on and why are we figuring it out at Model Home?
So, obviously Beck owned the Gasswell site. They came in, we started with the preliminary plat, then went through that and then went to the final plat review. That's a long process. I believe Joshua and I seem like we've known each other for two or three years now. At some point, a builder will reach out to, or the developer will reach out to builders and say, "This is what we've got coming." And so, not speaking for them, but they don't know exactly what they've got a, in front of them on the very front end when we're doing the, at the preliminary plat stage. That's part of, you know, that's the developing, what lots can we fit? And again, just the uniqueness of these particular, uh, lots, that's where that starts and then, so.
And because it's a smaller lot, then it, then it falls into the category that doesn't allow front-facing.
And Joshua may be able to speak, but you may have some builders that just, no, this is not, we can't fit what we need to.
Gotcha.
You know, on these, because what's ultimately unique on these is they're, some of them are just not quite as deep as what they really want. They're wide, but they're just not quite as deep as, as what they need to have, so.
I did find that floor plan.
I'd love to see it.
That's the front elevation.
Right.
And I'll scroll up and show you, that's how it sits on the lot and you'll see the one-car garage coming up there.
Okay. Cause that looks like a one-car garage.
That is.
That's a two-car garage.
No, sir, that's a, that's a eight-foot wide door.
Okay, okay, okay. And so the garage is, is side entry?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's a two-car side entry.
Okay.
So that's gonna be recessed back from the front build line about thirty-five feet, give or take.
Yeah. Well, that's very much like mine. I don't, I don't have the golf cart, um, door, but. Nice, I like that.
Anybody else wants to hear? That's the model we submitted.
Eight-foot wide door?
Yes.
So that wouldn't impact your, the home value or your ability to?
No, sir, typically, I mean, obviously, everybody wants as big a garage as possible.
Pick these guys.
But a lot of people, the sixteen-foot wide door was the two-car that most people were parking on a day-to-day basis.
So has Drees built this model yet in Trophy Club?
Not in Trophy Club. We haven't built on this size lot in Trophy Park in quite some time.
Okay. But Drees has built multiple homes in Trophy Club?
Yes. Yeah, uh, Hogan's Land, the, the building of Hogan's Land, the last lots that we did. Trying to build on every last lot you have here, possible.
Reed, you have any comments you wanna?
No, other than the fact that I think, uh, the concern about overcrowding the backyards with those backside neighbors with the elevation, to me, is the bigger worry. I think this one, like you mentioned, the odds or the percentages of the really, if we're calling egregious-looking garage setup is so low. Right. That I think that's really outweighed by the concern for those backside neighbors, in my opinion.
Yeah, I, I agree with that as well and, you know, the more you look at it, that I would say the precedence has, you know, the garage facing the street, but really it's the standard.
Yeah.
You know, and we're hitting seventy, eighty percent for all the homes, it's, that's the norm. And now why are ordinance, it's like that, that, you know, that's not time to discuss, but, um, I don't, I don't take exception to it.
And one other thing I think that's unique is that this community is what, eight, eight units you said there or ten units?
Uh, seven.
Seven.
Yes.
And, and it's gonna be a, a, a a community of their own. It's gonna be behind a brick. It's not, it's gonna be, the only houses that are gonna be looking at each other are the individuals across from.
That's true, that's a great point.
You know, it's, it's, it's gonna be limited to these seven, eight homes or whatever in this community. It's not gonna be beyond there, so, uh, one shot on that one, so, uh.
I think that's, I think it's a good shot because it's limited, it's limited, uh, access area and not too many people are gonna see it. It's not gonna represent Trophy Club particularly in this one place. And, um, yeah.
I think we're gonna find that to be the case for the next two that they present as well.
They are. There's no through streets on any of these pods.
So do we have anyone that wants to make a, uh, proposal? To accept or deny or?
Do it, so, so I think we should make a proposal to accept, but with the restriction of it being an eight-foot.
On the second door?
With, with of the gro- uh, front-facing garage.
Anybody wanna second that or?
I would, I would second that.
Uh, do, i- is it a roll call or is it all, all at once?
Either way. However you prefer.
I like getting it done quick.
As long as, as long as we recognize there's a formal motion and a second, then.
And we have a formal motion and a second with a qualification on that.
Perfect.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
All right.
We'll see you in a couple minutes. We'll let Matt read this case and then come back.
Matt, you wanna read it?
No.
Okay, number two, case ZBA twenty-three dash zero zero two, The Willow Estates at Trophy Club. Conducted a public hearing regarding the requests made by Drees Custom Homes on behalf of the landowner, Beck Properties Trophy Club, P L P for zoning, or variance to zoning, regulations to allow for a third and/or fourth-car garage is to face the street for lots two-dash-ten, block A, identified in the final plat for The Willow Estates at Trophy Club, also known as Track Two, approximately four-point-two-zero-eight acres. Out of the Rosalinda Allen survey abstract number seventeen, county Trophy Club, Denton County, Texas, M. Cox.
Chair.
Yes.
Let's go ahead, let's, let's go ahead and open the public hearing now and then we'll do B afterwards.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, let's open a public hearing. Perfect.
I'm up. Okay. I'm not gonna give you the history again. Okay, uh, background. They are requesting to allow for a third and/or fourth-car garage to face the street. They are similar to the surrounding properties of PD twenty-seven. Uh, the hardship is stated as previously, the zoning requirement for home and driveway access for R-12 district does not match the surrounding homes. Again, these are Trophy Club houses that are surrounding The Willow Estates, the two-H Gasswell site. Another rendition, um.
Will you under, explain what the one and the two is?
Say it one more time.
Well, you're just covering the first one. Can you explain the difference between these two so we can understand?
Okay, so the norm is what we're doing now, is we open a public hearing, speak, close the public hearing, and then he'll read the, and that's the.
And you'll explain the difference then, because I'm not understanding any of the questions.
Sure. Okay, so this is, um, basically the entry. So I think what Doug and, and Steve had mentioned earlier, it's the only way in to, to get into this site. So they will, uh, go up Highlands Court. Right now, it is a court. Uh, and then at the end of that arrow tip is where we're gonna have town right-of-way that will curve back around and then go in there. Twenty-one of the homes, um, have garage facing the street and two of the homes do not. Okay, in summary, uh, like the previous, concurring vote of four members is required, uh, for approval. Public hearing was published in Star Telegram and notices were mailed out to all property owners within two-hundred feet. Again, we, I would say that Mrs. Kiefer's email would cover, um, all three of these, so I don't wanna leave that out. The objection, and I'm here and the applicant is also here for any questions.
Does this lot or this Gasswell pad have the same drainage issues as the other one?
Yes, sir, it did.
Being that we're gonna have to raise all the pads by three feet?
Yes, I didn't, I didn't mention it earlier, but, um, these three sites have gone through all final plating, um, all civil drainage, all that has been approved through our town engineer and also, uh, through the mud district as well. And yes, all water on these lots, they did raise them, but all water that from backyard, they all drain to the front, to the street, which I'm over the streets department. That's where we want it. We want it coming to our streets, not to neighbors' houses.
How many homes did you say are in this development?
Uh, nine. Uh, there's three capped heads on this one.
Any more questions for Mr. Cox?
Yeah, this is very similar to the, to the last case. Like I say, one of the beauty, beautiful things about Trophy Club is that we don't have front-facing garages here. But this is kind of a unique neighborhood. The people that, um, are gonna buy these houses are gonna know what they're gonna get. It's not trying to maintain the integrity, um, of Trophy Club proper, but it's gonna be maintaining the integrity of, of their little neighborhood here, so.
Do we have any questions?
Any?
Do we have any questions for the?
Or anybody in the public that'd like to speak?
Well, okay. I think this is what's-
Do we wanna speak?
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Can you bring, uh, can you back it up?
One second, can you say your name and address?
Bob Morrison on, uh, Morgan Lane, twenty-six thirteen. Where you talked about. Oh, right there.
Okay.
The second point. Similar to homes surrounding the property. There are, if I believe, if I'm correct, there are twenty-three homes that border the property of where they're gonna build. Morgan Lane.
What's the, what's the?
Hy- Highland and?
It's a Balmain or it's Bosman?
Yeah, Bosman. Nineteen of those homes have two-car garage. Four have three-car garage. I mean, so more garage, bigger home, more that all of us are gonna be looking at from our backyards. And as such, we're not crazy about it. Of course, we're not crazy that they're building there anyway. But, uh, that's a different story. So anyway. That's all.
Morgan Lane is the arrow, the, the-
No, that's Highlands Court. Morgan's on the south side.
So we want the blue and the orange there, yeah.
With the three adjacent blues?
Yeah, right there, go.
And if I remember correctly, is it the orange that are? So all the orange are depicted, those are two-car garages that are facing the street. And then the three-car or the, the ones in blue are just your J-swing or, forgot how, what you said, but it's a side, side.
Side entry.
Yeah. So, that's all I really have to say. I wish I had your garage.
Come on.
That's all. I, that's, I just, we'd just like for you to think about that.
And it, just to clarify, what you said was, um, they only have two-car garages, right? We're not addressing if they face the road. They just, these have only two cars with the exception of, you said, four?
Yeah, you just drive down the street, you can count them.
Right.
Can I speak too?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
So, Susan Morrison twenty-six thirteen, Morgan Lane. I just wanted to build on what he said, is one of my questions is, adding a third and fourth garage, how much more of that lot is gonna be building if you do that versus if they keep it at two car garage? Because my biggest concern is how much, how close they're gonna be to my backyard. They already know how high they're gonna be, but how wide are they going to then be if they add the garages? So I don't know if anybody has an answer to that, and also I'd like to see what their plan is for this, these lots, because those other pictures, it's a whole different neighborhood where we are. Like we said, we're, they're two car, smaller houses. So are we able to see that to get clarification?
Well, we have the.
Okay.
I'm up. Sure.
Myself, Vikram, two six one one, Morgan Lane. So would there be a wall that would be constructed throughout the site?
Yeah, I was curious.
Would there be a wall that gets constructed throughout that perimeter of that site?
Is it a wall, or is it a fence, is that, is that the question? I'm sure you guys will present, you'll answer that. Okay, so we, we wanna see a layout?
Yeah, but layout is very valuable there, because most of our homes face the road towards the inclination down. And if there's a high inclination, there's a high chance, from my experience being an engineer, the water will flow down to these homes.
Okay.
Mina DiCosta, two six one five, Morgan Lane. I have the same concerns that Susan and Bob raised also. Right, I live in a single-story, two-car garage home, front facing, yes. The homes are small, and my, the two neighbors, the three neighbors down, we all have smaller homes, single-story homes. So, we're not those big homes that they showed, so.
Let me, let me check one thing, we're, we're voting on the front facing versus the size of the home. These homes are, are, correct?
Yep.
Um, and, and these homes do?
Same as the others.
Right.
Just to allow the third and/or fourth car garage to face the street.
And these, these structures comply within code on size and, and coverage of the lot?
For the, for the R twelve, yes.
For the R twelve.
Yes, the, the lots are already.
They're in compliance, there's not, they're not out of bearing.
Yes, the lots, all the final plats have been done, the lots and the layout is done. What house goes on those lots is not determined, but the lots are, they are done.
Right.
So the only thing you're considering or not is whether or not you wanna have any of these garages face the street?
Right. But we can answer their questions on fencing and, and layout.
They're not relevant to your, unless that's gonna affect your decision, um, no, but you can.
Right.
If you wanna have the developer address some of that.
I'd like to hear it.
I agree.
You know?
They're here, why not?
Why, yeah, so, that's, yeah, you know.
So on this specific site, there's actually going to be a retaining wall in a portion of, of this against here. So we're raising, we're bringing dirt on this side, and again, the, the road comes around here and, and does kind of a witch, weird shape like this, it, again, it's because of the gas well side, making sure that we are covering the gas well side. So you'll have a retaining wall here, and then the water will drain towards the street, and on this side already, you don't need a retaining wall, so you'll be at the same, I mean, it'll be basically the same elevation, and then the water will drains down towards the street again. And then all the water just goes into a storm drain and then go back this way. So that's the way it is, and it's my understanding that on this retaining wall here, you might need iron fence, but Matt can speak to that probably more than I do, because it's facing.
It'll be wrought iron.
Wrought iron fence there, because it's the ordinance, I think.
That goes to the public land?
Yes. Correct.
The fences, or the, any kind of fence that would be between the, the development and the existing homes would be built by?
Wood fence.
Wood fence that we, that you would put in, or that the?
There's already some wood fence there, but I'll let the trees kind of explain to the home builder what, what the, usually they do on.
We have, do you have? Come on. Yep.
South Alabama twenty-six seventeen, Morgan Lane. Um, so these fences that are gonna be between the properties, how hard, how high are they gonna be? Six, six feet, eight feet? And like, for instance, my property has half wall, half fence. Is the wall gonna be replaced with a fence, or the fence gonna be replaced with a wall, or? And I have the same comments as everybody else. You know, you're gonna put three, four garages, you know, how, you know, I mean, there's gonna be pretty much no, you know, gaps between the houses. They're gonna be so close to each other that I'm gonna be able to hear everybody else's, you know, commotion and whatever they're gonna be talking about and so forth, so.
Let's hear what the developer has to. I mean, I think one thing that needs to be taken into account is, there's gonna be nine total homes in that whole area. There's more than nine just on Morgan Lane in front of that area, so the, they're gonna be much bigger homes, right, but the lots are gonna be much bigger, so.
Can we find out how much bigger, you guys keep saying like adjectives, but I don't have an idea of how much bigger those lots are than what mine is.
Yeah, no problem. So when we look at these, I think this is a six, seven, these are eight lots backing to this section. Right now, this plat is gonna have one home here, two, three, four, and five. There's gonna be five homes backing to eight homes. So obviously a lot wider lot. Our buildable pads are sixty feet wide. Uh, we'll probably have a little bit more space between the homes than what's currently on the homes that we'll be backing to. Probably, I'm guessing, twelve to fourteen feet between homes, where it looks like.
Actually twenty. We have ten-foot side yards, so there'll be twenty feet between our houses.
Where I believe these homes right now have probably five foot to six foot on each side, so roughly, we're doubling the size between, between our homes. It's sixty feet wide, um, they're correct in that the, obviously we'll max out the width, but more we start pushing them back, we, we do start encroaching, getting closer to the neighbor, which we're allowed to go eighty feet back on the pad. If you all would allow front entry garages, just like what's behind us, we could pull the house forward and do different floor plans. That, that could be an option, but obviously it's not upper discussion today. Uh, I don't know that, how, what we'd have to do to, to get to that, but it could be something that we could maybe entertain. But like I said, we're gonna have wider homes, wider space in between our homes, and it's five homes backing to eight. As far as the fencing, there is a, it's wood, I believe, right through here, and then it starts to the, the cement wall, and I'd have to look at our developer agreement with Joshua and see if you're taking that down and putting a wood fence up, or if that wall would just stay existing like it is.
Again, that's really not what we're here to vote on. We're here to vote on the, the garages. So we have, you said five homes that are backing up, and then I guess two on the east side and two on the west side, and is that?
There's one here that's at an angle, there's one here that's at an angle, and then two over here.
And then, and then access is off of the?
That's correct. Lost my mouse.
Yeah.
This street just swings right around, and as Joshua said, it has a dip where it has to come in and cover that up the gas well, and it has a radius cul-de-sac right back here. Kind of an S, S shape.
And will there be a common area, like an island in, in between those houses, or is it just one street, sort of?
Just one street, with a wide open cul-de-sac at the end, there's no island or anything in it. Kyle just showed me, there is an HOA, which is to be a green belt lot that sits here on the corner. So it'll just kind of bleed into the, back towards the, the lake area here.
Questions? Okay. Any more public comments? All right, so we're going to be, because we, we.
Go ahead, if you will, go ahead and close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing, and now we're going to get reading glasses on. B, take appropriate action regarding a request made by Dries Custom Homes on behalf of the landowner, Beck Properties Trophy Club LP for variance to zoning regulations to allow for a third and/or fourth car garages to face the street on lots two dash ten, block A, identified in the final plat for The Willow Estates at Trophy Club, also known as Track Two, approximately four point two acre, two zero eight acres out of the Rosalinda Allen survey, abstract number seventeen, Town of Trophy Club Denton County, Texas, M. Cox. So we would have discussion here?
Nothing new.
Nothing new?
Perspective as the prior request for variance?
Anyone wanna put up anything, or?
And I would keep going back to, you know, the intent of, of this meeting is whether or not we're gonna have street facing garages, right? And I think, you know, the public brought up other issues. But, you know, I do realize that these homes along Morgan Lane and, and heading north too, they are a lot smaller than what Dries is proposing. They do have street facing garages, which, you know, is what we're here to decide. If, if we didn't grant the street facing garages, I mean, would that impact the size of the house that you put on there? Would it impact the width of the house? You know, I know it's been replatted already, so we know what the, the widths of the yards are gonna be, right? Would it increase the size of the house?
It wouldn't really change anything, because we're still gonna have to come up this side and turn into the garage. So the garage is roughly twenty feet deep, and then you're gonna have a twenty-foot wide turn radius to get in there, and that kind of fills up the width of the lot, the home would just be pushed back a little bit further, because we would have the availability to do a three car if we wanted to, all facing the side. But when you do that, it just keeps exponentially pushing that home further and further back.
So the three or fourth car garage facing would, in essence, would it lower the footprint?
It could, it'll shallow it more from the back, yes, sir. I mean, obviously, we don't wanna push a home back, I mean, we, the front build line set there, we want it to be this, we can get the largest backyard possible.
You, you made a comment, if we approve the two car facing, which is not proposed.
That would limit that you'd only have a two car, you wouldn't have a three car in this, in that design, correct? Is that what you're kind of insinuating?
Well, since we have wider lots, we'd probably end up, if we ask for a variance of that, I'd probably ask for a three car front entry variance to get the, the wider. We might, we've got a few floor plans where we offer the depth, as Matt was saying, where you have a, a one car end and another car behind it, kind of pull them in in order, we could maybe incorporate a couple of those plans. It won't work on all of these lots, because some of them are odd shaped. There's about three of the five that, back to the homeowners that are behind me, that are more straightforward lot, sixty-foot wide pad, eighty feet deep, that we could do maybe a little bit of variation on.
So, so if we approve this as, as the request is, we will provide a product that is, is, has as much backyard as possible.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is the intent.
And that's, and that's what we want here, and that's what the, I understand a lot of the neighbors want to.
Correct.
I mean, they were told when they bought their houses, probably, and I've heard this comment, that nothing will be built on this property.
Right.
Unfortunately.
I don't disagree.
They didn't get it in writing.
No, sir, I've been in this business a long time, a lot of people say a lot of things, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Any proposals?
Uh, motion to approve with the alteration of an eight-foot front facing garage.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Three?
Four.
Four?
Four in favor.
And did you, are you opposing?
Yes.
Okay. So it's a four one? Guess we approved. Thank you. All right. Number three. Sorry. Case ZBA twenty-three dash three, The Oak Estates at Trophy Club. Conduct a public hearing regarding a request made by Dries Custom Homes on behalf of the landowner, Beck Properties Trophy Club LP for variance to zoning regulations to allow for a third and/or fourth car garages to face the street for lots one dash eight, block A, identified in the final plat for The Oak Estates at Trophy Club, also known as Track Two B, approximately four point three three nine acres out of Thomas J. Allen survey, abstract number seven, Town of Trophy Club Denton, Texas. Public hearing, or no, no, I'm sorry. Mr. Cox?
Yes. Okay, item number three, these are Oak Estates. They are, uh, same request, allowing for a third and fourth car garage to face the street. They are similar to the homes surrounding properties in PD twenty-seven, and the hardship is stated as zoning requirement for home and driveway access. For the R twelve district does not match with the surrounding homes. Got Oak Estates, uh, these are for the houses that are right down the street. All right, this one's kind of a unique one to get to. If you know where the dog park is, this site is just north, it's in that north west, or northeast corner of the dog park, so it is, it's kind of unique and difficult to get to, but they are virtually surrounded by houses that have the one car garage facing the street, or the third car. Two do not. In summary, uh, concurring vote of four members is necessary for approval. Public hearing was sent to Star Telegram. Notices were emailed to property owners within two hundred feet, and we did have the objection from Mrs. Kiefer in the email. We probably, I, I will, I will add this, that out of all of those phone calls, for whatever reason, the majority of them came from this site. And I've, I've driven and, and been in that neighborhood and love that whole area, so really it was just a matter of explaining what that language meant on that third and fourth car garage. We had, had one lady, she, she thought in her mind is that they would have three or four car garages lined out, you know, going longways, facing the, the street, and so I asked her politely what her address was, and then I said, do you have the exact same style house that, what they're asking for? And so, um, but the applicant's here, and I'm here if you got any questions on this particular site.
Any questions? Any questions for the, the applicant? I mean, is there anything different, is there gonna be a similar fencing in the back, I guess, as with the last time?
This one's eight lots.
Eight lots, and then there's, is there one or two?
Just, I think you said it was R twelve, but being this is the R fifteen.
This is the fifteen, yes, you're right.
That's the only real difference in it, and, you know, really, I just wanna see what you guys have to say and talk to you afterwards.
Okay, yeah.
Um, I believe this is the, this has eight residential lots, and is this one the two open space, or just the one? Okay. This is probably the most kind of squared up looking of all of them. The gas well heads are almost all in the middle, so it's a really nice layout on the final plat.
Where is the entrance going to be for this community?
Right. Here.
Right there, okay. So it's just going to.
P and Z and Council know that as the infamous one hundred lot X, because that was a HOA and then dedicated to the town, and there's, yeah, it was, it was a fun one to work through. But we've got it taken care of.
Any questions for the applicant?
Same raised lot, right, same as the other ones as well?
Yes, y'all still can correct me if I'm wrong, but waters, is it draining to the east? Okay, so it's tying into our stormwater.
Yeah, you have a retaining wall along here, here, and I think it's, it's dubbed somewhere here.
Okay.
And then everything flows towards the street.
Okay, so all those south pads are raised up to get water.
To the street back towards the cul-de-sac.
Some of it's going to drain back to the core land of the dog park, right? And have to, because it's a flood.
Yeah, I don't think he's allowed to dump into the dog park at all.
Yeah, that's, that's my dog's land, and he wouldn't.
That's not. I did have a, one, the homeowner that's right here, he and I've had a.
And that's me.
That's what I thought, I thought I recognized your voice. So we've had lots of conversations with that, and got a, this isn't really regarding this particular, but we do have, got a stop sign that we're going to have as they're leaving that, you know, area, just because it could be kind of a blind curve, so. It's good. So if y'all have any other questions?
Is that a retaining wall between the property we're looking at and his, his, his yard?
There's currently, is that masonry? That's currently masonry.
Retaining wall.
So mine backs up to your wall, and there's a wood fence, tentative for this, I'm all good with the third and fourth facing car garage, but just, I want to talk to you about how we're going to plan that next, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Like the public comments we got going back here. It's okay, it's okay. I, any more comments for Mr. Cox? Do we need to call these guys up? I mean.
I don't think so.
I'm good with it.
I was just going to quickly add that these are a lot, as Mr. Cox said, this is a lot more squared up site. We have five homes, one, two, three, four, five, going down this way. These lots are roughly, they're two hundred and something feet deep, so there's quite a bit of space between this one homeowner that we're going to back to and then this gentleman back here. Because as the street comes in, it comes this way and comes straight down, there's a cul-de-sac right here. It's pretty straightforward.
Do you anticipate that these will start at a higher price point than the first one you referenced?
We'll see how the sales pace goes, but that's the intent.
Okay.
It's all going to be. It is premium driven.
Okay.
And the dog park.
Of course.
For sure.
And just out of curiosity, my dog won't be that offended, but does this lot, does it, do those homes, will they back up directly to the dog park, or is there a buffer that I'm not seeing? I'm just trying to remember what it looks like.
I believe there's, let me try to pull it up on like Google Earth.
Like from that very back corner of the dog park, is the immediate other side of that fencing, these homes backyards?
There's, there's a large group of trees there.
Uh huh.
I can actually, let me show you on the map, this will give you a really good idea.
I was just trying to visualize it.
Two or three of those will go back up to the dog park.
Yeah, because in the dog park.
Absolutely.
So it's going to be right on the edge. Go all the way back there.
All right, interesting. Yeah.
It'll be right on the fence, I assume.
Can I see that?
They've got retaining walls, the fence is fixed and pulled feet up.
Yeah, those houses will be raised up high. It's about, well, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially. They can drain back in to each other's.
We have one home that does back up to the, the side of this. Sorry, I wasn't going to go up there. I had no objections, no real comments. That was where the original gas well side was, that's just the dirt that's been turned up, because that's where the temporary walls filled right there.
Is that filled dirt?
Yeah, they've already started moving dirt to a lot of these sides.
Okay, so any comments? Oh, okay. We already did the, we're in phase B, right? We've done that, or do I have to redo that again? Closed public, we were in the taking action, I've already read that.
Now you're reading B.
No, no, I didn't, I didn't. Okay, B, take appropriate action regarding the request made by Dries Custom Homes on behalf of the landowner, Beck Property Trophy Club LP for variance to zoning regulations to allow for a third and/or fourth car garages to face the streets of lots one dash eight, block A, identified in the final plat for the Oak Estates at Trophy Club, also known as Track Two B, approximately four point three three nine acres out of the Thomas J. Allen survey, abstract number seven, town of Trophy Club, Denton County, Texas, M. Cox.
I was just going to comment that these, these types of homes that Dries, I think, is going to build, is very at home with that neighborhood.
Yeah.
It's the appropriate size, it's got the appropriate garage, you know, you know, with the exception of just those two in blue, the rest of it is, is all green, it's all what they're proposing.
Agreed. Agreed. Anyone want to make a proposal?
I'll propose to pass.
Second? Second? We got a proposal and a second?
Yes.
All in favor? We got a five oh. Feel like the Texas Rangers playing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Good luck. Good luck. Okay, the last case for the night, case ZBA dash twenty-three zero zero four, four zero six, Ramsey Trail. Conduct a public hearing regarding a request for variance through a special exception to construct a new fence in the side yard setback at four zero six Ramsey Trail. Take it away, Mr. Cox.
Okay. Okay, I'd be remiss to say how ironic it is that it was just a little over a year ago, and we're hearing a fence case, and we're hearing a fence and then garages facing the street. So, okay, four oh six Ramsey Trail, y'all are pretty familiar with, we have pretty good details in the packet. A couple main points, so you can't bring a zoning case forward, you've got at least a year. That is attached to the address. So if it, if, and we've got a new applicant, they moved into the house after this, you know, a year ago, when the previous applicant was. Had the new applicant brought something to us six months ago, we wouldn't have been able to take it, because it's attached to that address, not to the individual that lives there. Also, if you recall, that one of the, one of the issues with the last fence that was brought to you was, y'all really were wanting more information, distances, what is it going to look like, things like that. We also had the neighbor that lived behind, he is not with us, he and I did meet last week, he is out of town. But he said that I could use the words, this, this does not give him heartburn. So obviously, he said, if they didn't do it, he'd be, he'd love it, but he said, as opposed to the last time that this came up, he said he was fine. I also talked to. Freeman?
Freeman.
I think it's Freeman. Freeman. Freeland. He lives on Dover, he was next door, he called me today and said, I can't be there, we're going to be up, out of town, but I'm good with this, if you want to, you know, let them know that I'm not objecting to it, as opposed to the year earlier he was. So we've gotten... One other little detail that I did not have last year was, November fourteenth of two thousand nineteen, four oh one Abbott Lane came to P and Z, or I'm sorry, ZBA, and they approved extending the fence further out. Then we found that back in two thousand seventeen, another house down the street, five oh one Fisher, also came to ZBA, and they were granted that extension of past their build line and then further out to the property line. That staff report I have sitting in front of you back from two thousand seventeen, I'm kind of using their homework, but on page two, one of my planner predecessors shows all of those homes at Canterbury Hills that came forward requesting that fence extension, and there's, I don't know how many, eight, nine, ten of them, through about a two or three year period as they came in. In two thousand nineteen, the vote was a four one, approved vote. Two thousand seventeen, it passed unanimously, and then I think every one of those that you've got in front of you, all approved. As far as we can tell, this particular four oh six Ramsey Trail is the last of. We haven't been able to see any others that may come to. Quickly walk through, they submitted two fence options. I've got that picture, I do not have that here. Okay, I apologize, it is in the packet, you had one of them that, it just basically came straight out and did a ninety degree turn, and then the one that staff would recommend would be the one that has that vision clip, so it's cut at a forty-five degree angle, that would help the neighbor that backs up, that's a key lot, when he's pulling out of his driveway to be able to look off to the left and see if, you know, there's any kids on the sidewalk, you know, whatever, so they cannot go any further from the house than, there is a utility easement there, it's a ten foot utility easement between the sidewalk, it's a, from the sidewalk into the house, it's a, at least ten foot in. We do know that Atmos Gas and Encore do have lines in there. We have a few pictures the applicant gave us, and it actually shows on that staff report that shows all of those different addresses that were approved, each one of these are on there. If you want me to stop or pause, I'd be happy to go back.
Can you go back, just a sec, yeah.
This one on Ridge View?
Yeah, so, correct me, this is going to be ten foot off the street, not off the sidewalk?
That's correct, so.
So it's going to be.
It would not look like that.
Right, okay.
That's correct. Same with this one, if you look at the very top. I think that's around six to seven feet off the sidewalk, and that wouldn't be the case here either. This one's closer, I have been out there and looked at it, but I still feel like that because they, this particular house does not have an active utility easement, whereas four oh six does, so four oh six, their fence is going to be pushed in further than what this one is showing. Just going to go back one quick item. I don't have the picture on a slide, but it is in your packet, and we've got a, it shows basically an overhead of where that fence would, and it actually shows the sidewalk and the utility easement on there, and it is a great depiction of where that's going to be.
Yeah, that's, that's page four of six.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, this shows a lot better, a lot cleaner vision lines than the previous.
And I think that was one of the issues that, that we had, is we didn't really know, and we had a handful of people in the audience that were really asking questions, and they're just, we didn't have the ability to say, this is where. At this point, we can't emphatically say where it is, but what I can tell you is it won't be in the easement, and before, if y'all do approve, before they build it, staff, we will require to have a surveyors come and flag it. That's not just for us and for y'all, but for the safety of them, we need to make sure that they are outside of, of that utility easement. If Atmos, Encore, AT&amp;T is also in it, if they've ever got to get in there to dig, it's really part of my job and my department to make sure that we're looking out for the citizens where something doesn't have to get undone that we approved. I did add this, just for Mr. Harper, so in the, in our ordinances, we've got a list of criteria for these special exceptions, and I listed them off, they are also in your packet, I'd be happy to read them, but there's a handful of, there's five lists that you kind of go through mentally to go through to decide, you know, on these cases. Again, I'll be hap, and if y'all aren't in a huge hurry, A, no diminutive, no diminution in value of surrounding properties would be suffered. Granting the permit would be a benefit to the public interest or surrounding properties. Denial of the permit would result in unnecessary hardship to the owner seeking it. A zoning restriction as applied to the owner's property and affairs with reasonable use of the property, considering the unique setting of the property and its environment. By granting the permit, substantial justice would be done, the use must not be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance. Technically, for ZBA cases, there's no such thing as precedence, but I have shown in the packet and upfront that this is the last of the homes in Canterbury Hills to be making this request.
Yeah, and each one of those statements that you made, A through F, is an and at the, at the end of the sentence, so.
There is.
All of these conditions or considerations are grouped together in one.
That is correct.
Big decision.
Yes, sir, it is.
We, you showed us, can I ask a question? You showed us option two, is there, is there a possibility for an option three to, to reduce the, the length of this fence?
Sorry, the applicant is here.
Okay, okay.
So not speaking for them, but I think the, the, the space is what they're really, really after, and I'm not going to speak for them, but I'm sure they're open for options.
Okay. Do you want to? Do we have any, I mean, do we have any more questions for Mr. Cox?
So, so what's, what's the exact ordinance that we're trying to?
Okay, great question.
Thank you.
So just straight ordinance, the fence in this, in these areas cannot be built past the build line, so, which is normal on, in houses that are on the inside next to each other, but when you're asking that of a house that's on a corner lot, then they've got this situation that they've got in that top right corner where the fence just runs alongside of the build line, and you're feasibly looking at a lot of backyard space that's not. There are different. There are different areas of town that you can put it on the property line or ten foot within or, you know, different. But in this particular area, it is, uh, as per build line for corner lots.
Right.
They do that for a number of reasons. One is you don't wanna have a city full of fences and not houses. You reduce the amount of green space that's there. Um, and we don't have any ordinance to, to stain this fence. We don't have an ordinance on, can the fence sit straight on the ground or not? So, I think our, our fence ordinance needs a little work, but, uh, in my opinion. Cause we have a number of fences that aren't, aren't stained, that are rotting from the ground up because they sit on the ground. And, um, yeah.
Any questions for the applicant?
I was gonna say, do we have any questions for the homeowner applicant?
Yes, I, I do. Is, is, would it be possible to reduce?
Bring him up, yeah, bring him up.
Appreciate your time doing this. I, I was, I voted no against this, um, uh, this case, uh, a year, a year ago, or a little over a year ago. And, um, the applicant was really upset and I think chewed Matt out. And he was gonna take us to district court, okay? I, I live pretty close to this area, and I, I don't think it was more than a month, the house was up for sale. So, I don't know if he sold the house because he couldn't get his fence, which made me feel kinda bad. But, um, I, I do have opposition to, to, to a large fence that's, um, that's visible from. I, I just like to maintain the integrity of our ordinance, and I think it's there for a good reason. And so that's my question about this fence. Does it have to be that long? Cause if you're trying to build an area for kids to play, maybe a green space for the dog. It doesn't have to be a, a dog run here. It could be cut short maybe. And I could support something like that if we could shorten it a little bit. So see more of your house, more of your yard, um, and it would help maintain the integrity there a little bit. It'd be a compromise. That's what I'm asking for.
So Kristin Sheath, four oh six Ramsey Trail, um, I'll, I'll address your question in a minute. I guess just, uh, to explain the situation, we bought the home about a year ago. I've got three young kids, eleven, uh, girl plays volleyball, nine-year-old son plays baseball, and a five-year-old daughter plays soccer. It's a very active family. I've got two dogs. Uh, when we purchased the home, we had actually asked the homeowners if they were aware of any limitations or restrictions on building the fence out. And they had told us no. So we, we were unaware of this situation. In fact, my wife would have been quite upset if we weren't able to do this. So we thought we were, uh, in pretty good position to do that. Uh, so again, we were unaware of what happened about a year ago. I don't know the reason why he moved, but hopefully it wasn't.
They lied to us too, because they said they were gonna get this fence and they're gonna maintain it perfectly.
Yeah, okay. Well, in terms of, of your question for the other option, in terms of distance, what's the, what would be the acceptable range you would have on that?
Well, uh, the back of your house, if you could maintain it to that line, would that be possible? That's, that's reducing the, the, the length of this by about, oh, sixty percent.
My preference for, given the kids' athletic abilities and sports, would have a bigger, larger area to play. With soccer and baseball to throw, that area from the back of the house to the back of the fence is fairly limited. And wouldn't provide ample space in my mind for our kids to do what we are asking them to do.
Well, if you're gonna shorten it any amount, what would your number be?
I remember you mentioning the, those windows, that they were also wanting to have some privacy there.
I just assume that's a dining room.
It is.
Yeah.
And I didn't mention it, but security was the other thing for us, because there are windows accessible from the street right now. It's lack of security. So our preference was to go, you know, more or less where that white brick is, not maybe quite that far up. But somewhere between that gutter on the left-hand side and that white space would be our preference to gain the majority of our backyard in fence, enclosed.
I guess by ordinance, it's gotta be ten foot behind the, the front facing of the house, the front house line. So, um.
Was there a, was there a pool? There is a pool in that backyard, right?
There is.
Was it there when you bought it?
It was.
Okay.
Brand new, two weeks old.
And that.
To me, sorry, go ahead.
The fence height around your pool now is, is it six foot or is it eight foot?
It's six foot. And, and the purpose for the eight-foot request as an option was because our house is raised up a little bit. And as we look out the back of our, um, back door in the pool, we can see the neighbor's garage and some of their windows. So the, the intent would be eight foot where we can see into their home for privacy and then taper down to six. Um, and then carry it around so it looks very nice around the front of the home.
So the taper would, it would be eight foot by the pool end and then taper down toward the front? Is that what you're saying?
It would be, if you looked in the back of the house, it's not actually the side. So our neighbor's house in the back.
Yeah.
Um, there's a two-car garage that we face.
Right.
They've got.
Right.
Yeah, right there. And so right where he's.
Yep.
Got the cursor, would be eight foot tapered down to six going that way and around. Out, opposite side of the street.
Okay, okay.
And then would it, along the street, it would be six foot or eight foot along the, the?
If it was eight foot, we would carry it around so it didn't have a taper up and down, although I guess that could be an option just to gain privacy in the back and bring it down to six. I'd want it to look as nice as possible for us and the neighbors, of course.
Cause it is a bit of a hill, your elevation from the house down to, to the street level.
Yes.
I can appreciate the, the kids playing soccer in the back, you know, I, and to, you know, uh, in the same boat as, as the homeowner. Except I don't have an option for a side yard. So if my kids are gonna kick the soccer ball, we're gonna have to kick it by the street. And we don't want that happening. And, you know, with this piece of property, uh, he wasn't given option of a side yard like we have. It was basically his fence was running all the way back. So, uh, I don't see any issues granting him, uh, the length of run that he, that he wants. I mean, I even think, you know, given that cut for the neighbor, cause I remember the concerns he had last night about visibility. I think that's doing, you know, that neighbor a, a favor. He doesn't have to do it. But I think, given that option, that, uh, that, you know, he's, he's recognizing that, you know, some neighbor may have an issue with it and he's addressing it. Even with the height of the fence, I mean, looking at his, uh, his house, it does set up high. And I don't think an eight-foot fence would, would look out of place. You know, I've, I jog all through Trophy Club and, you know, I don't know how many neighborhoods I can touch the fence from the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Here, he's at least giving us a good fourteen feet off the sidewalk, which. I think, you know, to, to your point, that's still a lot of ample green space between the sidewalk and his fence. I mean, that's a pretty decent length from the sidewalk to his home.
Wait, I'm sorry. Are you saying there's fourteen foot from the fence to the sidewalk? Then you have the th- three foot to the gra- to the road?
Yeah, it looks like there's a twenty-six foot dimension string from the corner of his house to his property line. And he's not even taking half of that. Looks like he's eating up about twelve feet, and then you hit that utility easement.
Yeah.
And then after that, his property line, and then you have the sidewalk.
Good point. I think the first time that they came through was the fence was going much deeper, or was proposed to be much deeper. Or further towards the road.
Yeah, and I know you don't speak to precedents, but. There is precedence for it, you know, whether we can acknowledge it or not. I mean, you said this is the last of the homes that's requesting this variance as exception. And it's not, I don't think it's much to ask.
I think given all those factors, I mean, it would almost be categorically unfair not to. And I know we still have to keep in mind the specific conditions of the ordinance. But with everything that's already happened, with the fact that, I mean, you look at the house, right? You know, the pool obviously looks like a very nice pool, takes up the vast majority of your backyard. There doesn't appear to be much side yard on the other side. And so, you know, without disparaging the prior homeowner, right? You went in there thinking, okay, I'm gonna get my, you know, playable space for my kids on this side yard because I know it's allowed, right? And, you know, that's, that's where your space is. There's ample green space. I think frankly, if anything, I mean, in terms of property values and keeping the neighborhood, um, you know, at a good level in that sense. I almost think that giving you more yard and more space makes for a nicer appearance than just the fence coming directly. Out from the side of the house, in line with the house.
Yeah, no, no one wants to look into someone's dining room.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, before we get to, we're, we're getting into conversation, I think we still have to open it up for public comment. And I think we do have someone that, that should make comment before we get too, too involved in this.
Absolutely.
Um, so, do we have any more further questions first off for the app, for the applicant before we have this conversation?
Uh, just one quick one. I guess it's a joint for the applicant as well as Mr. Cox. The homeowner that you would back up to, they're fully on board with this. It, it wouldn't give them, what was their wording again? It wouldn't give them heartburn?
So when he goes back and watches this. He said, of course, if he had it his way, they would do nothing. But he said this does not give him near the heartburn that the first one did. Because he and I are standing out, and I told him, I said, I've been doing this a long time. And I'm standing out in the yard, and I'm standing about where that post would be at that forty-five degree. And he went and stood in his driveway and said, you know, I could, I could live with this. So, um, I've, I've talked to him quite a few times, and he seemed to, seemed to be fine with. But again, you, you know him better than I do. But he was not, he's not going to come out and say, I'm all for it, you know, whatever, if, if that makes sense.
But he, he did prefer the option with the forty-five degree cutout, correct?
Absolutely, he did. And I, I think even if this came across our desk, if y'all approved it without. Um, at some point between plan review and myself, we are probably going to call the homeowner or the contractor and say, you shall do this. Cause I have the ability to do that. And especially if we thought in any way, shape or form, there was a safety issue, um, then I'm gonna do that. And I've got another one here in Trophy Club, and I've got three in Rowan Oak that I can s- say that's Matt's job right there. That fence is cause of mine. So.
That's your lasting legacy.
So it's a, that was a pretty major factor, you know, for us as well.
Thank you. Okay, uh, public comments. Do we have, please come up and state your name. I take it you're Mr. Ferguson?
So, uh, Bob Ferguson, three five five Beckett, which is right at the end of Dover, down where he lives. And, uh, I'm also representing the HOA, is from the A C C side of it. And I guess my first question is, if you approve it, but the HOA does not, what is, where does that leave us? And maybe that's a question you could answer.
HOA stands.
HOA stands, okay. So that's my first question. Second question or concern is, I haven't seen any renderings. You have a packet, we don't. Do you have a packet?
I do.
Okay. Well, I don't.
I am from the HOA. My name is Raven. I'm six five three Sheldon. They, they emailed it to us. So we have the one that has the normal, and then we have the one that has the angled version.
Okay, and the, the other co- comment is, you talked about fences being pushed out. Well, take Court as a cul-de-sac. There's four houses. Much different situation. Second of all, I've got an email from Fred to our HOA president, still having some concerns about the fence. And then I don't know if any four oh one, or five oh one Fisher may be, is that a fence to the street? Or is that just pushing out the fence? Cause some have pushed out their fence lines a little bit, but not near to the extent of what their request is.
Oh, yeah, I mean, there's, there's a long list. I mean, there's some that were pushed out just ten and some were.
Yeah, but they weren't to the curb, and they did, they did not in any way, shape or form, you know, inhibit the site. You know, the, the line of sight. So if you come down Dover, it's kind of a blind corner, right? If you put a fence out, it's gonna be more of a blind corner. And I appreciate having kids. I had kids, wanna play in the yard. At the very end of that, there's a huge cul-de-sac that backs up to the golf course. So there's plenty of room to, you know, kick the soccer ball around, throw the baseball, do those type of things. So, um, my concern is, like I said, more just from the aesthetic side of it. You know, cause if you look down that street, everything is straight. You can see all the yards. There's no fences. So I'm just concerned that that might have some impact on it. And I'm sorry that the previous owners did not disclose the ridiculous fight that they went through here a year ago. They were kind of c- cantankerous people. They didn't move because you voted it down. He actually got a better job back in Seattle, so they moved back to, to the, to the west coast. They're out of the state of Texas, so that's a good thing. But anyway, so, uh, I would just like to make sure that it doesn't really inhibit and go too far. And kinda disturb the aesthetics of that whole, uh, both Ramsey and Dover, uh, when you, when you take it into consideration. I will say these guys have been great neighbors. We walk by there two, three times a week. And, uh, but there's a lot of foot traffic. There's a lot of kids. There's the school buses, uh, there's walkers, a lot of joggers, bike riders. So that would be part of my concern as well. So, thank you for your consideration.
Ms. Land, do you wanna make a comment, or you said you didn't? You were here, you just?
I'm good because we, we, on the HOA, we received the drawings that he submitted.
Okay.
So I have a question. If, if, so if we approve this tonight, um, the saving grace may be the HOA. Says no.
Sounding, sounding like a politician.
Anymore? Oh, I guess we're next to the, uh, to make, to take action, yeah. Any further public comments? Wanna make a closing comment? This is applicant. Um, okay.
You'll formally, just formally.
Formally close, uh, formally closing the public hearing. Uh, thank you. Okay, next is to take action, appropriate action regarding the request made, oh no, wrong one. Take appropriate action regarding a request for a variance through a special exception to construct a new fence in the side yard sec back at four oh six Ramsey Court. Now we have comments among us. As Doug was saying, you know, our out is that the HOA, uh, would have the final say. But being that, um, we also have conversations whether we put it on their lap or on our lap, if you will. You wanna, I know you have some feelings.
I have, I have strong feelings. I, I, I opposed it last time, and I'm probably gonna oppose it this time. Cause I wanna maintain the integrity of, of our, of our ordinances here. And, um, I think we have too many fences on, that are visible from the street. I came from Irving, Texas to Trophy Club. And Irving, Texas, as it noted, is a city, like my mother said, it's a city of bad fences. And they don't, they don't maintain them. They don't stain them. They sit them on the ground. They rot from the bottom up. And, um, one of the joys of Trophy Club is that we have reduced fences, especially where it comes in this case. But I do appreciate the, having a closed yard, um, so the dogs can, can roam. And, um, the kids can be reasonably secure. They have a pool there. They've got the pool fenced off, um. For privacy. Um, if you live on the golf course, you, you don't have that, that, that benefit. You, you have to have a wrought iron fence, so, so there's not much privacy. But, uh, um, that, as, I, I got rabbit, um, fence, rabbit, they call it rabbit fence on my wrought iron to keep the little puppies in. I guess a, a third option is to. I guess a third option is to, my preference is they shorten this fence to keep it as, so we can keep as much green space and house and open visibility as possible. It's kind of a compromise, in my opinion, but, you know, I'm kind of torn 50/50 here. I'm counting on the HOA to turn this down, because they do, the golf course is just, just down the street. It can't be, what, 20 yards to the golf course? And there's, there's big open space there, and it is a very active neighborhood. Like I said, I've driven by this property a number of times and lots of nice homes. And I was so happy that they didn't put up the fence and was so proud of the work that the ZBA did a year ago to turn that case down. And like I say, to maintain the integrity of this neighborhood, so. The more I talk, the more I'm against it, so.
Well, I mean, what I remember from last year is probably different than you. I remember two neighbors being very much against it, and that's probably why I voted the way I did, right? Because our whole point is to make adjustments.
Sure.
To variances, or variances to people that want to go around the rules, so. And they, they were the tiebreaker for me a year ago, because I know that if I was standing up against one of my neighbors that I live next to and saying, I don't want them to do this, then I definitely got a side for, side with the homeowner or the neighbor that's against it, but we don't seem to have that issue today. So that's why I'm kind of leaning towards a different, a different outcome this time.
And he did say he wouldn't have heartburn, because last time we got the impression he was having heartburn.
Yeah, for sure.
He did, he did. I think he just didn't have enough information at that time, as I recall, sitting in the stands.
We didn't have a nice drawing either.
No.
Of what it would look like, so we were all kind of trying to picture in our head what, where it would start and end and how far out it would go, and there's a much better packet this time.
Reed, do you have any comments?
Yeah, similar to what we kind of mentioned earlier and what I talked about in terms of the fairness of it and the fact that it really is the last one, I pulled up an old house that was for sale in that area so I could look at street view. Because I think one thing I want to think about is, you know, jokes aside about the HOA being our backstop, I don't want to set up just what's going to be an inherent conflict, right? So I want to kind of speak to the HOA and air out, you know, any concerns or my thoughts about the process. And you scroll around those streets, and his house is the only one within any proximity that has a street-facing side yard. All the others are either golf course adjacent, or they're required to have wrought iron because of proximity to the golf course, or they have homes on both sides. And so I was trying to find, okay, what's the closest house that has a similar lot that would have a similar fence? And you go down and it's the corner of Ramsey and Abbott, and that person has the exact same fence that he's wanting to put in. And it just, I mean, it looks just as clean. I think it, if anything, keeps the value of the home higher. I get that there might be a slight aesthetic change depending on your preference, but to me, it just, it really seems like the right case for a variance, especially given the precedents that we're not allowed to think about, but it exists nonetheless, and we'd be foolish not to, not to acknowledge it. So those are kind of my perspectives. I think he's presented a good case. I think all the factors, for me, caused me to lean towards approving a variance.
Do you have any further comments?
You know, I, I agree. I think I've kind of stated my position pretty actively already that, you know, if I had to default to, you know, I would default to the homeowner. And, you know, in essence, he's kind of claiming back some of his property to use it the way he wants to use it, and it's not out of the norm. It's, there's precedence for it. So I would, I would definitely default to allowing him to do so.
And the, and the HOA will get an application, and they'll hold a hearing of the neighbors, and if anybody wants to say anything about it, they can there, right?
You know, I walk past there pretty often, and I always sit there and look at that space, you know, and I'm like, wow. You know, there's so much you could do there, and you go both ways, you know? You could put a bunch of trees there, and it'd be a nice little park-like thing. And then you also sit there and think how, you can see there's pool and kids and all that kind of stuff. And while my kid's now 17, she doesn't need that space. You know, she used to tumble, and we, when we bought the house, it's like, oh, she needs enough room for her mat to go down so she can, you know, throw it down and do her tumbling, right? And definitely understand the soccer, volleyball, softball, you know, ball-playing area. And, and while there is space down at the end of the block, we all know they're not going to go down to the end of the block, you know? They're going to want to sit there and be able to have a catch or whatever it is in their backyard, you know? We played in the, I played in the streets, and, you know, that wasn't any fun. Or was fun, but until car windows broke, which is beyond the point. You know, and I remember when we had this conversation, I asked the prior owner or prior applicant if what his thoughts were on the wrought iron fence in that area. And, and his, their response was, it doesn't provide the privacy and the protection that we're looking for. You know, we have a pool. To your point, you know, we have a pool on the golf course, and, you know, 17-year-old girls and golfers, dad zone comes up real quick. But that's beside the point, you know? It doesn't give you the privacy that the wooden fence provides. I do like the fact that we're a little, we're further in, we're given more, much more feel that you can sit there and see a lot more of the green space between the fence and the road. I mean, I think the first applicant, we kind of felt as though it was going to be sidewalk and then fence, and that really gave me the feel of downtown Dallas where they're putting up a construction fence, and I didn't like that at all. I do like the depth. So I guess I'm giving you a real long answer of why I'm supporting it, but, and it's eight o'clock, so let's, you know, let's call for a proposal, I guess.
Just to keep in mind when you're making this motion, they've presented you with two options, so we would want, we want to choose one of the options that you're going to approve. If you're going to approve either.
Yeah, if you make a proposal. Anybody want to make a proposal?
I'll make a proposal with the option for the cut.
The notch or whatever?
So just to clarify, that was option?
Exhibit A, option two.
Option two.
Anybody want to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a formal and a second. All in favor? All opposed? 401.
You didn't come around.
Okay, so now we go to step five, which is take appropriate action on regarding minutes from May 12th and June 2nd, 2022. Sir?
Mr. Harper mentioned to us that there was, he wanted to add a few things to the minutes, and so what you have in front of you is the updated. It was just some clarification on, again, a year ago, he had a lot better memory than I did. But just some more clarification, and I believe it was the applicant's spouse that had spoken. So Alicia added those in.
Okay.
Who can vote on it? Only people that were there, is that correct? Or we can all vote on them?
That's right.
You can all vote on the minutes?
Okay.
Okay.
Any comments about the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next one is, any updates?
Going back to Mr. Harper's, I wouldn't have expected anything less because he has set precedence on voting no to every fence, right?
That's correct.
The only thing I have to update y'all on is, it looks like, I can't believe I'm saying this out loud, that we've got another fence coming up in a whole different part of town, and it's a very unique area. 303 Skyline. So, anyway, we've spoken to them. I don't know that it's going to get to the November meeting, but we'll reach out to y'all as soon as the application comes in and try to get a quorum. If it's not November, it's going to be December, our one meeting in December.
Okay. Is Skyline the little cul-de-sac that's up there left of 18 on Hogan's?
It is. There's only, I think, four homes or three homes. This particular, 303, they do not have a fence at all. So they've got nothing.
A wooden, a wooden fence we're talking.
He's got nothing right now.
Okay.
Really?
But he wants a wooden fence.
But if he's on the golf course?
No.
He can't.
Oh, he's not?
It's got, it's got to be wrought iron.
Okay, I want to be real careful right now. This is not a posted agenda item, so outside of giving an update, we need to not address it. Especially if it's the case.
And then we've got Hutchins Barbecue, we'll be coming to P&amp;Z, they've got an SGP for alcohol sales. And that's all we've got coming up.
When's the next P&amp;Z meeting?
November 16.
November 16?
The 16th? Yeah.
That answered your question.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's all I've got.
Okay. Meeting adjourned?
Yes.
Motion, meeting?
Motion.
Yeah.
Does everybody vote yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.